Welcome to the October 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And we start the meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone can.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we always start with public audience, so I know we have three people here. I will give Joan the floor first. And we're hold you to five minutes, and we're going to cut you off at five minutes. Okay, do you want a warning? I'll give you a warning if you would like one. Joan, would you like to?
Nobody can sign up to speak.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. On June 20th, 2022, the zoning commission discussed, quote, "A referral from planning director, request to amend condition number 13 of ZC number 1710 Hop Meadow Street, the Ridge of Talka Mountain, approval to allow residential occupancy permits to be issued for more than 90% of the total units before the two commercial cell buildings are complete and have been completed." The minutes of the zoning commission state, quote, "Referral from planning director, request to amend condition number 13 of ZC number 1710 200 Hop Meadow Street, the Ridge of Talka Mountain, approval to allow residential occupancy permits to be issued for more than 90% of the total units before the two commercial cell buildings are completed, are complete and have been completed." Mr. McGregor informed the board that the applicant will voluntarily submit a bond and that the town attorney said that the condition is appropriate. The applicant or representative from the Silman Group reiterated that they would willingly post a bond and that the effect of this would be to preserve the concept of multiple use of the site, specifically the two commercial uses at the end of Talka Ridge and enhance the aesthetics of the site. Chairman Ryan explained that they have eight apartments, that they have tenants ready for, and there are 12 more they would like to complete. The applicant commented that they have families that want to move in the apartments already, are see already. The board cannot move forward until the zoning commission moves forward. The applicant stated that the construction of the building will be done in December 2022, end quote. It appears that this amendment is inconsistent with past practice and would allow all applicants to file a site plan, make significant changes, post and post a bond, and then receive approval from the town. The site improvement bond was issued by Capital Indemnity Corporation for $611,000. It is interesting to note that John Hill Senate Jr., the chief executive officer and president of Capital Indemnity Corporation and a Democrat political operative who lives in Simsbury, was this a sweetheart deal. This board can be, this bond can be recalled at any time, leaving the town with little recourse to recoup the loss. Is this a paper tiger? Iowa Town Attorney Bob DiCrescendo approved this application stating, quote, "Conditions are appropriate. Lamp posts were erected that were inferior quality and did not meet the specifications of the site plan. They were removed and replaced. There were issues with poor heat distribution with pipes that were replaced. It is alleged the residents of this development have continual issues with the management of the development. People coming to Simsbury to reside in the development should be assured that the developer follows the approved plans." Town Farm Gifts of Love has taken over the property that was set aside through the Eno Trust in violation of the trust. The Eno Trust states, quote, "On November 25th, 1882, Amos R. Eno conveyed 140 acres of land to town of Simsbury, quote, 'to be used for the occupation maintenance and support of the town poor and said town and for no other purpose whatsoever, as the town shall care for the poor, care and support his poor on said farm without contracting them out to any person or persons for their maintenance.'" This First Amendment to the farm lease is made and entered as of January 14, 2020, between the town of Simsbury Municipal Corporation, having its principal assets at 933 Hop Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070, and Gifts of Love Incorporated, successor to the Community Farm of Simsbury, a Connecticut non-stock corporation with an address of 34 East Main Street, Avon, Connecticut. The lease with Gifts of Love was signed by town manager Maria Capriola, although it is in violation of the Eno Trust with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. The Eno Trust clearly states, quote, "Without contracting them out to any person or persons for their maintenance." Gifts of Love address is Avon, Connecticut. Not only is Gifts of Love and Community Farm in violation of the Eno Trust, they have not maintained the farm with overgrowth and weeds throughout the property. The Board of Selectmen should terminate the contract with Gifts of Love immediately. The Eno Farm's affordable housing is also in violation of the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury with rents for low and very low income residents, as described in the 1989 letter to the town.
Your time's up, Joan.
Town Attorney Bob DiCrescendo is presently reviewing the documents for compliance with the Eno Trust. The Eno Trust property should be repurposed with social services and health care offices for the Eno Trust community with over hundreds of families. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Mark.
Good evening. My name is Mark Ornstein, and I live at 82 Old Meadow Plain Road. And tonight, I'm representing the Simsbury Community Media Board. The topic is PURA Docket Number 22-06-26. Last week, SCM received notice to provide information concerning this docket. The background is that the short legislative session earlier this year, SB 278 was written to bring community TV funding up to speed with the technology changes. Currently, community TV stations receive funding based on subscribers to cable TV. Basically, with subscribers cutting cord, abandoning cable in favor of streaming, SB 278 proposed a change in the funding from cable TV subscribers to internet subscribers. But cord cutting is a misnomer. There still has to be a cable from the street to the premises for quality internet access for streaming. Last March, there were so many hours of public hearing on this, I know, because my turn to speak was five hours into the meeting. I'm going to read the introduction to docket 2206-26. "Pure study of the operations of certified third-party nonprofit community access programming providers. Notice of request for written comments due November 10th, 2022. On June 29th, 2022, pursuant to Special Act Number 22-23, a act concerning the study of community access programming operations, the Public Utilities Regulation Authority, Authority or PURA initiated this docket to conduct a study regarding the operations of companies and organizations responsible for community access programming operations and facilities study. The study will include at a minimum, one, a review of community access operations and current funding structures for both community access organizations' operational and capital needs, including review of the similarities and differences in the operations and the funding structures of both nonprofit and for-profit community access providers; and two, analysis and recommendations related to the statewide consolidation, statewide consolidation of community access operations, so that any recommended increase in the remaining community access organization's operational and capital budgets is at a minimum net neutral to the average funding collected from the applicable franchise area to support community access organizations in the same franchise area. In conducting the study and making associated recommendations, the authority will consider, among other things, the degree of financial support provided by the community served by the community access organizations, the appropriateness of the community access organization's personnel salaries, and the degree of support provided to the community access organizations through monies made available pursuant to Section 16-331 CC, which we know as PCCP of the General Statutes of Connecticut. The authority will report the results of the study, including any recommendations, to the Energy and Technology Committee of the Connecticut General Assembly no later than December 15th, 2023. The proceedings will serve as the administrative record for the study and issuance of the report." And that's the first paragraph of what you read. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, the station manager, for continuation.
I just want to clarify to you, I was talking about a different docket number when you were talking to me before.
You're right. SB 278 became the law.
No, I was stuck in the Aquarian PURA, all that stuff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Fallon. I'm the station manager of Simsbury Community Media located at 754 Hop Meadow Street in the lower level of the historic Eno Memorial Hall in Simsbury. I'll be continuing from where our esteemed board member Mark Ornstein left off. To facilitate the study, the authority requests participants file written comments on or before Thursday, November 10th, 2022 by 4:00 p.m. addressing the following. One, describe and discuss the current funding structures for both community access organizations' operational and capital needs, including the similarities and differences in the operations and funding structures of nonprofit and for-profit community access providers. Two, discuss whether any modifications to the operations and funding companies and organizations responsible for community access programming are needed, and if so, provide detailed descriptions of the suggested modifications. Three, provide and discuss recommendations regarding the statewide consolidation of community access operations, including any benefits or detriments or both associated with such recommendations. And four, provide and discuss recommendations regarding how to effectuate the consolidations of the community access operations to ensure that any recommended increase to the remaining community access organization's operational and capital budgets is at a minimum net neutral to the average funding collected from the applicable franchise area in the physical years ending in June 30, 2019, June 30, 2020, and June 30, 2021, dated at New Britain, Connecticut, sixth day of October, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. Special Act 22-23, it's me talking now, not on the sheet, aims to consolidate community access stations in the state of Connecticut. In order to provide the level of support to the town of Simsbury and its residents, it's very important that Simsbury Community Media remain an independent community access station. In the coming week, SCM board members and staff will be drafting responses to the questions issued by the Public Utility Regulatory Authority. The SCM board needs the participation of the town and the responses to the questions issued. The Simsbury Community Media President, Mary Glassman, who could not be with us tonight, will be in touch with the first selectmen. Together with the town's support, we can continue our mission of keeping the Simsbury community informed for another 38 years. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I know they do it on other boards, but are we allowed to do that? I can. Do we need to hear it? Is it critical?
I can read it from here.
Okay. Go to the mic, because SC TV needs to hear you, Mark. It better be under a minute, though.
Yeah, at least I think I skipped it. If I didn't, let me know.
Okay.
My nerves. On the last day of the legislative session last spring, the wording of SB 278 was totally replaced with a directive to PURA to study a statewide consolidation of community TV stations. The SCM board feels that this consolidation would be extremely negative to the reporting of events and government meetings occurring in Simsbury. SCM needs the involvement of the town in its response to the request for written comments.
Okay, thank you. Get the gist of it? Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public audience? Okay, so we have a couple presentations tonight. The first one is a proclamation for Friends, National Friends of Libraries Week. I'm not sure, Lisa, did you want to speak at all? Talk about this? I just figured you're the best person, and it was at your request to do this, so I'm going to let you.
Well, I'm Lisa Kareem, the library director, and as you probably are aware, the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library is a separate 501(c)(3) corporation that raises funds to support the library. They support the library annually with a library support budget that supports materials, programming, the summer reading program, support for the Innovators Workshop. They also support special projects like the Story Walk, so that the library can offer the community a lot of expanded things. They've also supported in the past the Maker Fair and other big events that we've had. So as I say in my budget presentation every year, the library could not do a lot of what we do, supporting this community and providing service to this community, without the work of the Friends of the Library. And their biggest fundraiser every year was just held, their annual book sale, which requires hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of hours over the course of the summer, and then, of course, on that day. It's a finely oiled machine, and the book sale chairs are here tonight, Charmaine Glue and Annie Wallach. Couldn't do it without them. So thank you to them, thank you to their volunteers, and I'm happy to recognize them.
Okay, great. So we have a proclamation. So we're going to read the proclamation, and we're going to start with Heather and go down the line, and then we will hand you the proclamation and thank everyone from the board, and read our motion also. Do you want to kick it off?
Great. Whereas Friends of the Simsbury Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year.
Whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present.
Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services.
Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for how, for all, and how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Simsbury proclaim October 16th to the 22nd, 2022, as Friends of the Library Week in Simsbury, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library and thank them for all that they do to make our library and community so much better, dated the 12th day of October, 2022.
Okay, Sean kind of got gypped on that one. So I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to, the motion that we would make is to move effective October 12th, 2022, to endorse a proclamation in honor of National Friends of Libraries Week. Let's let Sean. Great. Sean made the motion. Heather seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you immensely, and we. Lovely presentation of a. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to actually hand this up to President of the Friends of the Library.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the board for acknowledging our efforts. The library really is a community center. It's a very important community center. Thanks for recognizing us and our efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of our most cherished assets.
Our second presentation is with the Capital Region Council of Governments. We have Executive Director Matt Hart here in person, who is the director, and he is going to come up and present to the board and keep us updated on what's going on in CROG. If you're not interested in CROG, you are welcome to leave.
We're nice people, I promise. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for letting me come to the meeting tonight. Again, my name is Matt Hart. I'm the Executive Director of the Capital Region Council of Governments, and I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our activities, the programs and services we provide, talk about a few of our special projects and initiatives, and take any questions or feedback you might have. So some thank yous to start. I'd like to thank our first selectwoman and our town manager for their service on our policy board. Our policy board is our primary governing body. I'd like to thank Tom Roy for his longtime service on our Transportation Committee, Melissa Appleby for her tremendous service on our Municipal Services Committee, Bill Rice serves on our Regional Planning Commission, and Fire Chief Baldus, and your Emergency Management Director, Mike Berry, serve on our Capital Region Emergency Planning Council, and Chief Bolter serves on our Capital Region Police Chiefs Association. And it's also wonderful to see my former colleague and friend, Ms. Meriwether, here tonight as well. So some basics with respect to CROG. We're one of nine councils of governments in the state, and we happen to be the largest one. We serve 38 municipalities, and we're located in Hartford, including the town of Simsbury, a population of just under a million people, a geographic area of about 1,000 square miles. We go to the west, out to Suddington, to the east, to Mansfield, and then north to the state line in both directions. We have roughly 30 employees and a budget of a little over $8 million. We serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO. That's a federal designation that's administered by the Federal Highway Administration, and under that MPO hat, we administer a lot of federal and state transportation dollars to our member towns. And we serve as the Regional Planning Agency. We have a regional plan of conservation development, just like you have a local plan of conservation and development. And our Regional Planning Commission will hear applications that come before it. One of the services we've provided for the longest period of time, we have a regional purchasing coalition. And under that purchasing coalition, our member towns and actually other members of the coalition can purchase commodities as well as services. They can purchase from vendors that are on our list. So we do the due diligence on your behalf, on the procurement side. We have a small but mighty Public Safety and Emergency Management Division that works very closely with the public health community. They've been very, very active over the course of the pandemic. We also prepare an annual legislative agenda, and our first selectwoman here will be serving on our ad hoc committee to help put that together. That will be an issue, excuse me, a list of important issues for our region for the upcoming session of the State's General Assembly. And we serve as a content expert. If you ever need our assistance or would like us to testify on a planning issue, anything that falls within our area of expertise, we're glad to come out and do that. Let me just touch on a couple of initiatives we have underway, and then I'll get to the handout that I distributed. We're very, very focused on the bipartisan infrastructure law, or the IIJA, as it's sometimes referred to. The state of Connecticut is receiving approximately $6 billion under that federal program. It's going to be a five-year program, and it's, we're going to see funding opportunities for a whole variety of infrastructure, roads, highways, bridges, things like broadband, electric vehicle deployment, et cetera. So we're very excited about that, and we've added some additional staff to assist our member towns with applying for grants under that program. We just submitted our first two applications under the Safe Streets for All program, and that's designed to promote traffic safety improvements. We submitted funds, an application seeking funding to update our regional safety plan, and we also, or excuse me, technically, the town of Farmington submitted the grant. The town of Farmington stepped up and agreed to be the lead applicant on an implementation grant of about $22.5 million that would support projects in five of our towns. So that's an example of something we're very, very focused on. Another project we have underway, we have a waste management study underway. I think we all know that MIRA, our regional waste-to-energy plant, has closed, you know, has ceased its operations as a waste-to-energy plant. So we are looking to identify short and long-term solutions for our member towns, because right now, most of them are in a position where our residential waste has to be hauled out to different parts of the country at a very significant expense. So we're actively working on that project. Two other things I would mention, we're working to update our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or the SETS, and that's a compilation of economic development initiatives from across the region. And it's important to have that so that we can receive federal grant monies related to economic development. And then lastly, before I get to that benefit statement, I would touch on our transportation studies. We always have a variety of transportation studies underway. They're important because they lead to eventual projects. And one we have underway right now that I'm sure is of interest to you is our East Coast Greenway Closure Gap Study. So the East Coast Greenway, as you know, a portion of the Connecticut section runs along the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. There are a few gaps in our region, and we're looking to close the gap from Simsbury over to East Hartford, you know, going through Bloomfield and the city of Hartford, and then closing the remaining gaps in the town of East Hartford. And once that's completed, the multi-use trail system we have in Western Connecticut will be connected to what we have in Eastern Connecticut, and it's really going to be a strong and robust system. So those are some examples of some active projects underway. And then if I could just draw your attention to the handout I distributed, this is a benefit statement we prepare every year for our 38 towns. And on the first page, you'll see on the top right-hand side, your dues for the new fiscal year, a little over $20,000, and what we calculate as the benefits you've received over a five-year period. And under our estimate, you're seeing a return on investment of a little over $2.9 million on dues of approximately $98,000. So we think that's a good return for the town. You'll see how we break it out on this section of the page. If you look at the middle of the right-hand side of the page, we've called out some projects such as the Route 189 Multi-Use Trail of $1.5 million. Turning the page over, these are just some highlights from the previous fiscal year. It talks about our purchasing coalition that I mentioned earlier. You know, we saved our members, under our calculations, approximately $1.9 million. We initiated that waste management study. Looking at the lower left-hand side of the page, we've been administering for several years now Homeland Security Grants, 19 straight years, brought in $1.2 million in grant funds to benefit 14 of our local health departments. Looking at the right-hand side of the page, I talked earlier about the importance of the federal and state funding. Last year, we directed over $44 million in transportation funding to, for projects in our member communities, and we conducted a number of important planning studies, such as the Route 5 Corridor Study in East Windsor. And then, as I mentioned, we started the East Coast Greenway Gap Closure Study. And those studies are important because they eventually lead to design and then construction. State and federal government will require you to conduct these studies in order to ascertain what's possible. So let me pause there. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Happy to take any questions you might have. If I don't have an answer off the top of my head, I'll get back to you, as well as any suggestions you might have for CROG. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go down the lines, everybody gets a chance. Do you have any questions?
I don't at the moment.
Amber? Eric?
Matt, thanks for being here. When, I was intrigued by the regional studies you do, either the POCD or the Economic Development Plan. How do those interact with local POCDs or connect to local plans, if at all? How do they interact?
That's a great question, because we look for consistency. We're looking for alignment between the regional plan and our local plans, including the statewide plan where it's applicable. So we generally will have a steering committee for each and every project where we're seeking representation from across the region. Our planners on staff have some familiarity with your local plans, but we will produce a draft document that we will share. For example, when we're updating our regional plan of conservation development, we will send that out to the planning staff in all of our communities, you know, to seek their input and to see to what extent they foresee any issues or major conflicts. And then we have a public engagement process on top of that. That's kind of how it works.
Chris, you have any questions?
Yeah, actually, I imagine that, you know, each of your majority of the work that you all perform sort of follows a consistent format, kind of falls into some consistent buckets, and it's a repeating value-added solution. What I'm curious to hear in the last five What I'm curious to hear in the last five, let's say, you picked the timeframe. What is an issue or an item that towns that could be similar to us, or but at least in our region, have brought to you that is something that's new, that they don't have an answer for or are unfamiliar with or are grappling with? Something that wasn't there 10 years ago?
Yeah, great question. So I will highlight two. And these are something that I've been working on. I've been with the organization eight months. But before that, I've worked in the capital region for over 25 years now. Town of Windsor, Mansfield, and West Hartford. So one issue I would cite is waste management. Waste management, that's something we've been tracking for a long time. And Mr. Roy has been on a committee we've had in place for some years now. And, you know, looking at the direction the state was going in, or trying to work collaboratively with the state, we decided, hey, CROG needs to step in and fill in the gap here. So we took the step of initiating this waste management study to develop a set of short-term and long-term solutions for our region. On the short-term side, where we foresee a number of solutions related to user fees, like pay-as-you throw, and how do we get organics out of the residential waste stream? Because that contributes most significantly. So that's one example. A second example I would highlight that I think is more recent. I think we all know that our workforce, our workforce is challenged, both private sector and public sector. I'm sure we've all heard of the term "the great resignation." We've heard of the term "the silver tsunami" in the public sector, where we have thousands of people retiring. Thousands of people retiring in state government and in local government. And it's a challenge to find qualified replacements. So we're stepping into that space, and we're working on public sector workforce development in four areas. Looking at building inspection in particular. Assessment is another example. Economic development is a third. And a fourth would be, a fourth would, I'm trying to recall. I mentioned the inspection services. Animal control, animal control. So let me repeat those, just to make sure I haven't forgotten any. Animal control, economic development, inspection services, and assessment. So that's another example of something that's come to our attention more recently.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn to the screen with a small hand coming on and putting something on a selectman's face right when he's being asked. Do you have a question?
You babysitting?
I've got a 15-year-old.
Pleasure to have you here. Obviously, you're a legend in our community. Given we've stolen a number of your previous talent from Mansfield, we appreciate that. No, I appreciate what you're doing with CROG and looking forward to working with you more. I appreciate that. It's the first time I've had an actual overview of how it works. So I appreciate the information. But Wendy, no questions tonight.
Great. So I have a couple things. I'm happy to be on this ad hoc legislative committee with some other members across the state. I did want to focus in on the ClearGov. Is now, you've looked at the budgeting tools. And is, was there a need from the municipalities for you guys to identify, you know, a common tool? Because Amy's tired of hearing this. Like, we've had them come in in demo. We really like them. You know, it's not resource budget time for us to use them yet. But what, you know, you guys selected them. And also, do we get, we had looked at the cost structure and everything. Do we get better pricing because of your purchasing coalition?
Yes, and that's an example of the purchasing coalition at work. You know, where we've gone out, our members have identified a need. And we've gone out and done the competitive bidding to find a product that we think would best suit the region.
Okay, yeah, we saw them at the convention last year, and they just keep coming, showing up everywhere. The other thing I just wanted to point out was how CROG is with the IIJA. You know, you're representing, we've talked about the EV charging stations. I brought that up in one of the meetings, that the first go-around, you're looking at towns that are within a mile or close to a highway, but that there will be another pass for towns like us to potentially tap into some of that IIJA money.
Yes, so the first year of the program is reserved for the states. So our Connecticut DOT, and their plan has been endorsed. Their plan has been endorsed by the federal government, which is great. And they're producing a statewide plan that is focused on highways and one mile from an intersection. What we are talking about doing at a regional level is how do we supplement that state plan? How do we supplement the state plan? So let's develop a regional plan that looks at state roads, major collectors, arterials, shopping centers, government buildings, et cetera. So we want to develop a regional plan to supplement that statewide plan. And we'll look to do that in year two and the remaining years of the program.
Okay, and one more question.
Sure.
Since Mark is here, and he just presented us with what's going on with PURA and the community TVs. Have you guys heard any rumblings from the member towns about this potential statewide consolidation of, you know, community access?
I was, I was, I was following that issue in West Hartford.
Okay.
Our director had brought it to our attention. And, you know, that's something that I would recommend we track as part of our legislative committee.
Okay.
We can do that there.
Okay, great. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Okay. So now we go into the First Selectmen's Report. And I'm happy slash sad for, happy for you, sad for me, that I do not have one tonight. So I will work on one to get out, probably a little late, from my perspective. But I'm going to pass the buck over to Town Manager's Report, Melissa, to present.
So it was, as always, sent out by email, and it will be posted to our website along with the First Selectmen's Report. I will skip over the COVID update, but just a couple of notes from Public Works. One is a removal of a tree on Stratton Brook Road. This is a large white oak that we think has been standing for a couple hundred years. The health of the tree is unfortunately declining. And Public Works worked with an arborist to assess the tree, and unfortunately, it's not able to be saved. So I know Public Works posted a photo and some information on their Facebook page to notify residents that the tree will be removed in the next few weeks. A second and final item is the Household Hazardous Waste Event, which will be at Public Works 66 Town Forest Road on Saturday, October 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This allows participants to dispose of household items like chemicals and electronics, things that you can't dispose of with your regular trash. And participants can also bring up to two boxes of paper for shredding. So we do get that question from time to time. So this is a good opportunity to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move into any Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee reports. I will start with Sean. You have anything to report, Sean? There were some write-ups in the Valley Press about the SVIA this past week on some of the work that was done. I'm not sure if you saw that, but it followed through on the ambulance, you know, and also the accusations and cleared everything up in the.
Yeah, I did not, I did not see that.
Okay, it was interesting. Okay, thanks. Chris, you have any updates? Eric? Amber?
I do. At the Zoning Commission meeting last Monday, there was a public hearing held regarding parking regulations related to accessory dwelling units, where the zoning commission had opted out of state regulations related to parking specifically for ADUs in favor of keeping those regulations with the town. The state regulations would have been slightly less restrictive. The town was concerned that, or the zoning commission was concerned that there could be an increase in on-street parking. So the town has essentially held a, or the zoning commission held the public hearing to opt out of those state regulations regarding the parking related to the ADUs. And that will come to us before the Board of Selectmen as part of the whole package about ADUs. There was a larger piece regarding the zoning around ADUs that went through earlier this year. And this piece was just related to the parking piece of it. And so we'll be hearing about that here, I think, next month, probably. Yeah. And then also, Monday at 7:00 at the Simsbury Public Library is going to be the public hearing on zoning regulations related to the retail cannabis shop, potentially in Simsbury. So people are encouraged to come to that public hearing. On the Aging and Disability Commission, we have a sensory-friendly trick-or-treat coming up, Monday, October 24th, 4:30 to 6:30 at Eno Hall. Activities, refreshments, come in costume, RSVP to Yisley 2 at Comcast.net by Thursday, October 20th. And on October 20th is also the fashion show at the Senior Center. Lunch at noon, followed by a fashion show at Eno Hall, sponsored by the Arc of the Farmington Valley Thrift Store, the Aging and Disability Commission, and the Senior Center. And you need to register for that event with the Senior Center, and it usually sells out, so don't wait.
I have to get my outfit. Just a quick question. The survey that you worked on, was that updated? Because I noticed that there was a narrower age group recently posted. Wasn't it, it used to be 50 and older? Was it pushed back out as a different age group?
No, we were just trying to get more people to respond to it in a younger age group.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was any changes to it. Thank you. I just was going to comment, just the Finance Subcommittee. We have some of the 501(c)(3) applications tonight in our agenda. We are meeting next week to revisit the business program that we've been talking about with Mainstream Partnership, and also to look at some other functionality that we might want to pursue on this committee. So I'll turn it over to Heather.
I don't have anything for my committees.
Okay. Okay, all right, so that, oh, we got Sean. That concludes the Selectmen Liaison Subcommittee Report section. And now we move into Selectmen Action. And we will start with the tax refund requests, which need no introduction. So the motion that would be in order is to move effective October 12th, 2022, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $7,347.93 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
So moved.
I'll second.
Let me second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the next item is a donation from St. Matthew Lutheran Church in Avon. Do you want to read these?
I'm happy to speak to it if you want. Oh, sure. So this is a $2,000 donation to the Keep Simsbury Warm Program, which assists residents with their heating and electric bills.
Okay. Any questions? So the motion would be to move effective October 12th, 2022, to accept a donation from St. Matthew Lutheran Church. Thank you, in the amount of $2,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department's Keep Simsbury Warm Program.
I'll move that with our thanks.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we have the Greater Hartford Transit District Dial-A-Ride Operating Assistance Grant Agreement.
Sure. So this grant helps support our expenses related to the Dial-A-Ride program. This is something that we budget for as a revenue item, this grant. The town attorney reviewed the grant agreement, which is in your packet. And so the action here would just be to accept the grant funds.
Okay, anyone have any questions? So the motion would be to move effective October 12th, 2022, to accept the fiscal year 2223 grant funds from the Greater Hartford Transit District to support our Dial-A-Ride program and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award.
So moved. Second.
Whoop, we've got to change. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the Street Excavation Fee Schedule. We, I see we have Tom here and Adam here. Who is going to?
Should we be nervous that this is both of you?
No, if anything, I was here because I think this is Adam's first time here. He's our deputy town engineer, and I just really wanted to introduce him to the group. And really, this is his work. So I think he's going to do the presentation. And I'll just be here in case there's any, any interesting questions.
All right.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Adam Kessler, Deputy Town Engineer. Tonight, we're looking to adopt a fee schedule associated with the street excavation program. This is a program that's been around for, you know, over 10 years in town. And it's a way for us to protect the town's assets within right-of-way. It ensures all work is reviewed and permitted and constructed to town standards. Generally, contractors are required to be insured and bonded for doing any work within our right-of-way. Right now, permits are administered through the engineering department, and we do not collect any fees for this program. Area towns that do collect fees, Avon, Canton, Farmington, Weathersfield, and Windsor, these fees typically range from $25 to $100. And that, that range is kind of based on type of work and the municipality. We would be looking to administer just a flat $50 fee, whether it's a driveway, trench, what have you. Keeps it simple. There are two towns, Weathersfield and Windsor, that actually administer a licensing program, which we'd like to adopt here as well. And that's essentially just a yearly annual application to the department to formalize the insurance and the bond information, as well as kind of give evidence that the contractor's done the work before and where they've done the work before. Not a big deal for the driveway contractors that come in every single year and do a bunch of driveways. But, you know, when we have a new contractor come to town, we want to make sure that they're capable of the work that they're performing within our right-of-way. Those license fees typically are $75 for a new license and $50 for an annual renewal. Right now, we're looking at administering the fees as early as January 1st for the new construction season, if it's approved tonight by the board. We've been floating the idea out there to our frequent flyers that this might be coming in the next year. And then, once approved here, we would send out letters to the contractors that we have on our list, just to notify them. And our permit, you know, documents would, of course, be updated accordingly. Based on the past four to five years, from a revenue standpoint, you know, we average somewhere between 170 to 190 permits each year. So we'd be looking at about $10,000 for permits as well as the license fees. License fees would be, you know, about $1,000 of that. And if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer them. This is very similar to a fee schedule that we administered at Windsor while I was there before coming here.
Hi, I have a question.
Okay, sure.
First, Adam, welcome back to Simsbury. What was, I mean, I understand this brings us in line with other communities. Was there a particular impetus to propose this? Or do you feel, what problem does this solve?
So this is something that I think has been talked about for a number of years. Certainly, the last, you know, four or five years. And usually, it's a, it's an effort to recoup, you know, some costs that are associated with staff time to oversee the program. So when a permit comes in, you know, we review what the work is, what it entails. You know, check the contractor's bonded, insured, and all of that. And then we also often take a look at the work when it's finished and make sure it's, it's done properly. So there is a lot of staff time associated with that. And, you know, you'll see trenches throughout town, and we kind of keep an eye on that. So it's really an effort to take care of that staff time that's associated with the program.
Thank you.
I imagine, I mean, they're indirect, but I imagine if you go through the effort annually to present yourself for approval, if you will, that lends to a little, some level of commitment to the quality of work and the relationship you have with the town versus just coming in out of the blue on a new job, so to speak. So then, I think there's something indirectly there, that little extra step on their side, I think probably would bring the caliber of individuals that weren't working with us to a higher level, I think, an accountability level.
Certainly, certainly. And the communication becomes a little bit easier when we're talking about if, you know, you come across a contractor doing work that might not be permitted, the question to them is if they're licensed in town. And that's a little bit easier communication with them than saying, oh, he bonded and insured, and the contractor is probably going to say yes. But we want that extra level to be assured that they're doing, that they're capable of that work, especially when it comes to trench work within our road.
So, Adam, do we have examples where somebody gets a driveway paved and we're able to make them redo it because it was not done appropriately?
So in terms of driveways, we're, from a town perspective, we're really only concerned with that apron area. We wouldn't go into private property and inspect the work. Our concern is that first, you know, five, 10, 15 feet, that's within our right-of-way.
Understood, but I mean, are we, we made, of those 190, how many have to get redone every year?
At this point, we've been very, it's been very difficult to enforce, especially with the fact that we have not had an inspector onboard to do this as part of our team, that's something that we added last year in the budget process. But one of the areas that's commonly in the state with the driveway is, of course, the homeowner wants it to be flush with the road.
Yeah.
If that happens, and then we come back and pave the road, they're very upset if it doesn't match up. It takes away our ability to do a good job of paving the road. So that's why, as Adam was saying, there's a standard. The other thing that can happen is, if they're not careful and they go that driveway out into the roadway, just an inch or two, that brand-new driveway is going to get clipped by our plow, and of course, the homeowner is not going to blame the contractor that's long in the sentence, cash his check. And, and again, it's an opportunity with us, with proper inspection and proper oversight to just protect our residents, for a really not-on-the-thing.
No, I appreciate that, but you hit on, we have very little recourse to actually force the contractor to do anything, though, right?
I think, moving forward, our aim is with a more rover-plus program of contractors being licensed and contractors getting permitted, we're going to be much more active on our inspection end, because this is going to trigger us to do an inspection, and especially when we need a licensed contractor, if they haven't done it right, they're going to either redo it, or they're not going to be able to get a permit next time.
No, that's fair. And the only reason I'm asking is the permit is fencing in for a tax, right? Because the contractor is just going to pass this cost down to the residents, so we're in essence taxing our residents to this. So there's, there's got to be tangible value to it, right?
Yeah, I think the other, the other challenge, Sean, historically, is because there's no fee, when we catch somebody who hasn't done it, it's not even slap on the wrist, like you did these 11 excavations, you didn't get a permit, oh, there's really, you know, this is part of us.
No, I, I get that, but the, I mean, the recourse here is $550, though, right? I mean, that's not exactly a deterrent to, I mean, if you put a zero on the end of these fees, now we're talking about a deterrent, right? But then again, to my earlier point, that's just getting passed down to the residents. So I get the theory, I'm just, it's, it's an additional cost that the business is going to pass down to the residents for something that they probably think they're taxed on and already paying for.
Well, it sounds like a lot of neighboring towns already do this, correct?
Correct.
And it was, I did want to point out that I, I asked Tom before, like, where did this come from out of the blue today? But I was very happy to see that it was in the town, Maria's budget presentation from 2023, and it was highlighted there, so.
Well, I mean, it gets passed along, but I mean, $10,000, six, I mean, it's the de minimis attachment to the, to the tax.
My own personal experience, 22 years ago, I had to have a new driveway installed, long before I had this position here, and there was a $50 fee in the town I lived in, and there was also a requirement for an inch and a half lift into my driveway. It was small in comparison to the cost of paving the driveway, that was not a major break decision. And when they repaved our road, 12 years later, I was fortunate to not have to have one of those aprons put in, and I didn't have drainage problems, because it was done right.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, so if the board supports adopting this fee schedule, we move effective January 1st, 2023, to adopt the proposed street excavation fee schedule as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
None.
Okay.
I'll go opposed as well.
Okay, so that motion passes, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wendy, can I take one of these two gentlemen are here, two question, resident questions?
Um, well.
I can, I think, so the Route 10, two questions. The, across from Simsmore Square, the sidewalk that's being put in, I just had a question from a resident asking, are those stumps that have been there forever going to be removed with the final landscaping that you see? Okay, that's the first question. Second question was from the bike community, relative to the, the bridge going over by Ensign. Can you give us a real quick overview of what will be the ultimate redirection of that, the scale and width of that bridge, and will it return somewhat to its old path?
The new bridge being constructed by DOT, I believe, is going to keep the existing trail width over the new bridge when they're done.
So it'll be that wide?
That's my interpretation, yeah.
Okay, so then it'll, it's basically then going to continue on with the path that it is on now, then? It will not be returned?
It's not, I haven't looked at those plans in quite some time, but it's not a case of where it's going to go from a path to a sidewalk and back to a path. I'm fairly confident it's going to stay the same width as the path leading into it and out of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for letting me.
Sure. Okay, thanks a lot, Adam and Tom. Okay, now, we're getting into the fiscal year 2021 year-end financial results. We have Finance Director Amy Maryruther here to walk us through this. Amy, do you, are you going to just do the review overall, and then we'll go through the year-end stuff after?
Yeah, so I'm just going to go over where we landed at the end of the year, and then go through what we'd like to do with it.
Okay.
Okay, so I shared my screen, if it's easier to see, to follow along. So this is the general fund revenues and where we landed at the end of the year. So our final budget was $106,075,000, and as you can see, we came in at about $108 million, so we're just shy over $2 million in surplus on the revenue side. So just a couple of things to highlight on the revenues, and a lot of this is stuff that you've heard in the quarterlies, but just to finalize where we landed, can you see that all right, or should I make it bigger?
I can see it.
Okay. So on the finance department side, we had some additional revenue from our investment income. So at the end of fiscal year '21, if you recall, we took a huge hit on our investment income when the interest rates decreased significantly because of COVID. So during the fiscal year '22 budget, we were conservative on our interest, on our interest but, investment income budget. Luckily for us, the interest rates started to go up during fiscal year '22, and the budget that we had anticipated was lower. So our actuals were in excess of about $50,000, I believe. The town clerk side, we had excess revenues here. Again, this is just something that you've heard in the prior quarterlies as well, we've had the increased housing market because of COVID, and we had, we saw an increase in the conveyance fees as well as the recording fees due to the housing purchases. Down to the town manager's office, the increase in revenue here was additional pilot payment from the state of Connecticut. They increased our pilot payment this year by about $37,000, and then we received a municipal revenue sharing grant of about $25,000. These were not in the original state budget, therefore, we did not budget for them, but we did receive the additional income. Moving down to the police department, our actual is about $230,000, we only budgeted about $200,000. We had an increase in the amount of pistol permits, we were actually about $11,000 over budget. And then we also received a JAG grant for violent crime prevention for $15,000. Moving down to our highway department, we had, it's a de minimis budget, about $500, but this $124,000 was a FEMA grant from a prior-year storm. We don't budget for FEMA grants typically, it takes time to get through the process, what they're going to deny, what they're going to allow. So any FEMA money is basically extra revenue to the town. And then moving down to our Board of Education, we had some additional funding here due to some increased education cost-sharing revenue from the state of Connecticut that was not in the original state budget. So those are the majority of the highlights on the general fund revenue side. Moving on to the expenditures, we had our budget of about $106 million, and then we came in under budget at about $105 million. I won't go through the, each line item here, the majority of the savings in this, consistent with prior years, is the, on the expenditure side, is our staff savings, and then there is some in our legal costs. On the staff side, we saw a combination of savings related to, we had some position vacancies, we had the unsettled union contracts, we had a harder time filling some of the seasonal positions, and then, of course, with the decreased staffing, we had some benefit savings that we saw as well. And then on the legal side, we had the increased costs this year due to the labor relations related to the union negotiations and the arbitrations. Anybody have any questions on the general fund?
I, I do, and then I'll open it up. I just, it's more of a comment, and maybe you could just explain a little to everyone that for the last, at least two years, or at least the last year, we've, we've been way over on revenues, and we've come way, pretty much almost a million dollars under budget. So I don't know if you want to explain that. And then the other thing that I would suggest as we go into our budget season, as, last year was brought up, to potentially look at opportunities or savings without cutting services, if we could potentially keep that in mind as we look at the budget next year. But you had explained a little bit about the revenues, how they were, if you'd like to weigh in on that.
Yeah, sure. So on the revenue side, you know, the majority of the increased funding comes from, honestly, the housing boom, which was COVID-related, which we didn't budget for. And then the second major area is our state revenue. So when we do our budget during the budgeting process, you'll recall that we just take the state budget as presented, or as posted by the state of Connecticut, and those are the numbers that we incorporate into our town budget on what we expect to receive. And then as they make changes, it's a surplus on our side. The biggest change being with ECS funding, we received well over $200,000.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this? We're going to move forward to the next, next session. I did have a question on the Simsbury, we went through all the funds. Should I talk about it here?
On the farms?
The funds, yeah. The page two of the Parks and Rec Fund.
Yep, I was going to go through that next.
Okay, great.
So on the Simsbury Farms Fund, you'll see that we ended the year with a significant surplus of about $432,000, mainly related to returning to pre-pandemic activity. But if we go up to the top over here and we take a look at the specific revenues, you can see here, we had budgeted about $275,000 for special programs, and then because we were starting to return to normal, we were able to run some additional programs and came in at about $383,000. Moving down to the skating, if you just like, if you just compare the actuals for this year, $260,000 compared to $133 last year, you can obviously see the impact of the pandemic in the prior year, and then you see the same thing with the pools as well. We had almost half the income. Moving down to golf, it looks like we had a pretty decent year, which is in connection to the decent year that we had in the prior year, since everybody wanted to be outside. So golf did significantly well this year, and then you see the corresponding increase in the golf surcharge revenue, which is, which is expected as we increase golf course fee, or as we have an increase in golf course fees, the surcharge goes up with it. Any questions on that?
I do, I have a question.
Sure.
So I, we, I had asked you this before, and during our budget, it just stood out because during our budget cycle, we spent a lot of time talking about the funding that we give to Parks and Rec in the special fund, where we have an annual contribution of $181, which I think the Board of Finance reduced last year, and took the money, or took money from reserves. With this, and Tom's not here to look, stare at me, with this excess money, you know, can we flag this and look at it during the budget cycle? Again, is potentially skipping an additional funding this year if there's no, you know, required programs or something like that, since the fund balance is in such a good position now than it was, you know, in the past.
Yeah, of course, we can look at it during budgets.
That's just something I like to.
Wendy, I think there's, if you watch the, the recording, the 29th meeting, the PNR, Tom goes into a little more detail, as Amy was going over, about some of the dynamics that existed and the surpluses that occurred, or the, but I think one of the things that, one of the things they will be tracking moving forward is increase of labor costs that will continue to rise and rise and rise, it'll be, that'll be something we have to watch, because the minimum wage will be, continue to phase up, so that's just something we have to think about as well.
Okay, but just something to keep in mind, because we keep funding this, and maybe we could take a little vacation.
There's always going to be the, just, but if you look, I mean, Sean, you looked at it more than I have, but you could go back.
Yeah, I was about to jump in.
You could go back, if you looked, if you look back at 10-year trend, I mean, it looks like a, it looks like, it looks like an EKG, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't, remember, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars of expenditures in the revenue fund, that there's a discussion about whether they should be or not, right? So it's not just a transfer to supplement the fund, it is to offset some of those expenditures of, right? And Melissa, Amy, you know better than I do, right, but the, I want to say there was $300,000 through your analysis or more in, in potential expenditures that are in the revenue fund that arguably should be moved back to the general fund, right? Something like that, from what I recall. And this is the usual discussion of how are we managing this fund with the, you know, the right director of managing both, right, with sharing staff benefits, et cetera, and we've looked at that a number of times over the years.
Yeah, and just an idea, one, this example, like an illustration, not, not that it answers, but just an illustration, you know, you got some of Tom's staff working on BOE property, you know, such as kind of a dynamic of how things will sort of interlace together, and I can, I can tell you that, we look at the history of the, of the review of that fund, I don't think there's a perfect answer for it, but in a, in a, in a trend year like this kind of scenario, that's when we sort of start to poke, potentially poke holes in it, and then, and then when it trends down, we review this and try to solve it again the other way. So that's just what I think Sean and I experienced that in that long work session that we did on this.
Yeah, exactly right, we transferred a quarter million dollars one year to make this fund whole, so we've gone both ways.
Okay. Thanks, Amy.
And then the last fund I just wanted to touch on is our health insurance fund. A few things happening in this fund, so as of the end of fiscal year '22, we actually saw a deficit of about $546,000. A couple reasons for this, so on our premium side, we had, in addition to the staff turnover, where we just didn't have premiums coming in from staff that has left, we had a number of individuals that left the family plan, and those that joined the single plan, as well as those that left the more expensive HMO plans and moved to the high deductible plans. So for all of those plans, and then the lack of, and then the staff turnover, we saw less premiums coming into the fund. And then in conjunction with that, we actually saw claims consistent with what, with what we had budgeted. So even though we had that staff turnover, we had the transition in the high deductible plan, we were still seeing consistent claims with basically full members. And then in addition to that, you can see here, under our insurance refunds, this is our stop loss. So for those of you that aren't familiar with the stop loss, if we have significant claims over $275,000, we have what's called stop loss insurance, and we get paid back for anything over $275,000. So you can see this year, we had a significant number of stop loss claims compared to last year. So last year, we had claims in total of $178,000, and this year, we had almost a half a million dollars of stop loss reimbursement. And then down here, just to sum up where we are with our total reserves in the health insurance fund, because we always like to keep an eye on this, we're at about 4.8 million, or 33% of expected claims, and as I tell you every quarter, the target is 20 to 25% of expected claims, so our, our reserves are still in a good place. Any questions on that?
Just a comment, that's a, that's a solid job by everybody managing that, and the Board of Finance as well, to get that back to a good place, so it's, it's good to see that 33%, nice job.
And I assume that you expect the premiums to remain at the lower level, since you just saw all that movement of people to like different plans, like we kind of expect?
So, yes, some of them that moved well, a lot of them was retirement, so people coming off the family, and then singles coming on, and then we'll probably see a slight, slight increase as the staff turnover mitigates, so people coming back on. So there'll probably be a little bit of fluctuation, but yeah, less than what it was.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so that's all I have for highlights, unless anybody else has any questions on any of the other funds. Okay, so then, we will move on to our year-end transfers, and what we would like to do with our surplus. Okay. Let me just find my notes. All right, so this is our fund balance summary at the end of the fiscal year, so you can see that we started the year on July 1, 2021, with about $17 million in reserves.
Can you put it up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got it here, but just for...
I said, "as you can see." All right, now you can see. All right, we started the year with a fund balance of about $17 million, 300,000, and then, as we just went through, on the revenues, we came in at a little over $2 million. And then, on the expenditure side, we came in under budget about a little over $1 million. So, this is a net surplus to the town of about $2.9 million. So, I have a little asterix here. The Board of Education budget is included in our general fund budget. They're essentially just a department of the town, so you have Town Manager's Office, you have Finance, and then you have Education. The Board of Education came in with about a $454,000 loss this year. This loss is already incorporated into this $2.9 million. So, theoretically, the town surplus is 3.395. So, why I'm mentioning this is, we have our Board of Education non-lapsing fund that can cover the Board of Education loss. When we did our budget last year, we had anticipated that their non-lapsing fund would feather in the cost of their social workers, their new special education director, things of that nature. So, that money was essentially already spent in future years. So, if we take this money from the non-lapsing fund, then we have to start all over again during the budget for those out years, which is fine, we can do that. Another thing that we're having an issue with, and the reason for the loss in the Board of Education, is because of the special education costs. Due to COVID, we have seen significant increases in the amount of special education out placements, special education services, valuations, social emotional supports, and it especially spiked in spring of 2022. So, during the budget process in 2024, we are also going to have to reevaluate where we are with our special education costs. And we're looking at possibly being in a similar position for fiscal year '23, but we're still getting more data on that. So, typically, anytime there's an increase in ECS funding, or Board of Education tuition, all of that runs through the general fund, and if there's a surplus of, say, the $200,000 in our ECS grant, the Board of Education never gets the benefit of that, the town always gets the benefit of that. So, for this year, I am requesting that the additional revenues in the Board of Education side get applied to all this deficit, and the general fund basically eat the Board of Education deficit, so that we can work through the special education issues, and feathering in the cost of the social workers of the non-lapsing fund in the next budget cycle.
Amy, can I ask a question there? So, just to go back to the revenue side, right, the ECS grant was 490,000 more than we thought?
No, it was only 215,000 more.
I'm sorry, okay, because I'm looking at the budgeted versus the actual on the revenue.
Yeah, so the difference between that, so the special, the Board of Education loss was actually around 654,000, but we had loaned $200,000 to the Food Services Fund in the prior year to get them out of a deficit, and they gave us that money back, so therefore reducing the loss to the 454.
Gotcha, so essentially, 200,000 is covered by ECS?
Right, and then there's another 40,000 where they had increased tuition as well. So, I think that...
Yeah, so following your theory, right, so basically, the general fund is being asked to cover the other 250, or the other, what, yeah, 250?
Yeah, it's a little over 200,000 in total.
A couple questions.
That makes sense, and I appreciate the explanation, there's a lot of accounting involved here, but what's important to know, I think this is the first time ever the Board of Ed has been in this position, certainly as long as I've been here, and to no fault of their own, right, that they have to educate our kids, and they do their best, right, to budget for special ed, right? And I know, Amy, you and Matt are paying a lot of attention to that, I'm sure.
Oh, yes.
So, I think, I'm not surprised to see this happen, given all the stories of the challenges that kids are having in our poster, current COVID world too, right?
So, I had just a question, because you touched on, so you said this loss is due to special ed, and so didn't we pre-fund two years of the social workers in our budget this year? So, wouldn't that, I mean, is that, you said something about that being, the costs were included, because they were going to use that fund later, but for the next two years?
So, for the non-lapsing fund, so they added, what, four positions during the last budget? They added the special education position, I believe they added another support position, capstone position, and then there was the two social workers. So, we were using the non-lapsing fund over three years to feather in all of those costs.
Okay, but we originally said the social workers were for two years.
Right, but that includes that.
Okay. So, that's the only reason for their loss, is for educational costs?
So, you know, maybe I'm real dim here, so help me. If, so this is, we can, let's just play that we're assuming this 500, this half a million dollars is going to, if nothing else changes, but stays at this accelerated state of additional costs relative to special education, so let's just say it's half a million dollars next year, and it's half a million dollars the other year after. And why aren't we just simply, why isn't Matt just simply adding half a million dollars to his budget, so that we're not...
Chances are, he will be.
Okay, so then, we don't, so, understanding, you're explaining what's occurred now, and you're saying, we have to preemptively think this could happen again, but as far as a trend, but you're actually saying, we probably won't be here next year having this conversation, because it will have already been baked into his budget?
Yes and no.
The cost is already captured.
The fiscal year '23 budget is already done.
Yeah, so I'm talking about a year away.
So, for fiscal year '24, yes, we will be...
Let's just assume that Matt's going to bake that in his presentation.
Right.
Okay. But just say, if he didn't, we would be expecting this kind of a scenario to be happening again at the end of the year.
Exactly, and we don't have the numbers yet, but we're seeing similar trends, so at the end of fiscal year '23, I could be here in the same position, saying, hey, we didn't utilize, we utilized non-lapsing this year, so we literally have no other money, we need general fund reserves to cover the loss.
Thank you.
So, the reason why I mention this, obviously, is because you all have the authority to spend either the 3.3 or the 2.9. So, I'm hoping you all will be generous and take the 2.9.
I guess, I have one follow-up question, just on, again, the special education services. I guess, you know, because we, along with many other towns, I'm sure, are seeing this whole uptick, I mean, is there, is there any likelihood of getting any more ECS funding, or funding from the state, or anything to help offset those costs, or?
So, we haven't heard anything from the state, and special education funding has been a topic of discussion for many, 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 many years. The state of Connecticut, we have what's called the excess cost grant, so we're supposed to take the cost of our student times four and a half, and anything above and beyond that, the state will reimburse us, they're supposed to reimburse us 100%. They have not been able to reimburse us 100% in years. So, we only, we take the four and a half times the cost, and then we eat anything over 80%, because the state does not reimburse us for 100%. So, they're already struggling with special education costs around the state anyways, and they actually have a new formula that's coming out, that they voted on, where it tries to bring more equity to the ECS formula, but of course, it's going to the lower-income communities, where they're going to get the 100%, and Simsbury really sees no benefit. So, it's definitely a struggle.
Wendy, if I may, this may be the right time to ask this question or not, but the, I know I read some, and here you've got the trust funds.
Yes.
The four, five, six trust funds that we have, the historic trust funds, are those earmarked to be...
For education?
No, 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 I know, I'm saying, I can't get it out of my mind, but at some point in your presentation about transfers and all, are we restocking some of those funds that we tapped this past year to do some of the creative things we did in the budget?
No.
Or not?
Do we ever, so we, this quickly, we don't go through the Board of Ed budget, like in detail, so...
No, the only reason this has to come before you is because you all, on the town side, are entitled to the 3.3, and you're essentially giving up part of your 3.3 to give to the Board of Ed, otherwise, it just comes out of the non-lapsing fund.
Okay, but it's not...
At the end of the day, the taxpayers have to pay for this, even an hour later, right?
Right.
This is the summary thing.
Yep.
So, it's already baked into the 2.9? Okay. But again, we're saying, we're going to see that again next, this, at the end of, probably at the end of '23.
I mean, I can't say definitively, but we're seeing a similar trend, and we're starting to put numbers together for it, so I'll have more to report out on the quarterly, but a lot of towns are struggling with this, and it's been a topic of conversation amongst many.
Again, this is the first time, and Amy, you know, financially, you're better than I do, we've never had this for the Board of Ed, right?
Right, so as far as I know, and from the history, I know, they've never come back to ask for any funding from the town, and they've also never benefited from any of the education revenues that come in and access, it's always gone to the town.
Yeah, so what that means is, right, is if we don't apply that 200,000, we're going to essentially use it for capital projects for the town instead of against the, instead of against education funding, right?
Right. It would be an additional transfer to the capital reserve.
Right.
We're still waiting for the Latimer.
So, your ask is to do the 2.9?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that, or is that a...
It's part of the transfers that are already in here, because it's already part of the bottom line.
Okay.
I mean, to me, that seems like a prudent thing to do, is, I'd be uncomfortable authorizing 3.3, 3.4 expenditures in or allocation to the general fund, when we know this is out there, and this is excess, whether it's the town or Board of Ed side.
Yeah, this is like, this is like going to dinner, using your credit card and hasn't hit your bill yet, you know? We know it's...
We have the cash, we can do that though. And that's just my opinion.
Thank everybody.
Okay, great. Moving on.
And Amy, just one quick question on that last sheet, the difference between the original budget and the final budget?
106.
Yeah, so our original budget is what was passed at referendum, and then the final budget includes any supplemental appropriations that have been done during the year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so moving on to the requests for the additional funding, so transfers from the general fund, asking for $60,000 to transfer to the CNR fund for the ice rink chiller. So, this was already a previously approved CNR project. Unfortunately, like we've seen, the bid's coming back, having inflation issues, our bids came back, and we needed an additional about $60,000 to cover the cost of the project, and so we had to put the project on hold, since we didn't have sufficient funding. I will let Tom Roy take the Eno chiller, since this is his baby.
I'm not calling it a baby. So, the large central chiller that services Eno is essentially at the end of its useful life, and we're seeing the fact that it's unreliable. Fortunately, it started to fail just at the beginning of this fall, so we've really been scrambling to put a number together, and things have changed quickly, because right now, a replacement is actually not 125, it would be 175. And so, in talking with Matt Hopkins, who's our supervisor of facilities, we really would rather see a number of 20,000, which is going to allow us to replace two of the three compressors, and it's going to get us about four more years out of that system, which is when Eno is scheduled for a large renovation, and it would be just a better time, we think, instead of rushing into a new chiller now, we'll have time to look at alternate energy sources, that kind of thing.
So, you're saying you're doing...
We're saying, I'm saying that we would prefer to drop the number from 125 down to just 20,000, which is going in a good direction, and it's going to buy us several years with the existing system. It's not ideal, but I think that we are just in a position that, instead of 125, we'd be looking at $175,000, and we have a large renovation coming up, which might be a more ideal time to do it.
So, you can hold off with the 20K till you do it?
Exactly.
An unapproved large renovation coming.
That is correct.
So, we have to be, just whoever is sitting in this chair, I'm in support of your promotion tonight, but just, let's be prepared, four years from now, when that reservation, that renovation doesn't happen, we're going to be looking at a $200,000 chiller replacement.
Okay, moving down to the IT equipment for some switches. Melissa, this is her department, so I'll let her speak to that one.
So, this item is to replace a couple of switches, which I've had to have Rick explain this to me multiple times, but essentially, every device, the way they connect to the network is through a switch picture, like a giant switchboard. When these go down, you basically can't connect to the server, so these are things that we keep on hand in case they fail. We've already used our backup switches at Eno, because there was an emergency failure, so this would give us the ability to purchase backup switches, so that we have them on hand.
The transfer to the CNR fund for the home demolition at the 56 Walcott, this was previously discussed when we did the purchase for the 56 Walcott, and there was a heads-up that this expenditure would be coming. The town farm, I will let Tom take.
The town farm, we're anticipating some changes going on over there in the next few months, we've been up there to look at the facility. Sadly, it's falling into a little bit of disrepair. There are substantial improvements that need to be done on the farmhouse and on the barn, so this is really going to be to clean it up where it belongs.
And then, the next two, the Meadowwood barn demolition, and the SCTV studio room improvements, we did supplemental appropriations for these projects during the year, and then the Board of Finance had requested, since the money came from the capital reserve, that we replenish the capital reserve with any year-end savings for these supplementals. And then, here, remaining funding to go to the capital reserve fund, to have a contribution of what was originally $580,000, but Tom Roy graciously gave us back some money for the Eno chiller, so moved it up to about $680,000. And then, moving down to assigned fund balance, so these are some additional expenditures where we know they're coming, or we know that we have to reserve for them, so we put them in what's called an assignment, so that essentially, we cannot overspend our unassigned fund balance by this amount of money, because it is already accounted for and called for for specific things. So, one of the items, actually, two of the items, Parks and Rec temp staffing, and then Social Services temp staffing, we have a couple individuals that are going out on medical leave, so we will need some coverage while those employees are out, so some additional funding requests there. Finance Department is also asking for some temp help, we just had somebody come back from medical leave, and then we just had a transition over in our accountant, so just getting caught up from year-end and back on track with where we should be in our schedule, I would like to be able to give my staff either some overtime, or bring in some temporary help to kind of just work through some reconciliations and journal entries to get back on track for a few weeks. Down to the retroactive wage increases, we had our CSEA union contract that was settled, that was behind by three years, I believe. So, in those three years, we needed the GWI increases and the step increases associated with those settlements, those were either put into assigned fund balance in the prior years, which the contract was not settled, or put into contingency in the current year. We had already reserved about $500,000 for this item, so the increase is probably a little over $200,000 for that 798. The year-end encumbrances, these are essentially payables, these are items that were, say, purchased in June, but only delivered in July, so the check is being cut in July, however, we're using fiscal year '22 funding, so we call them encumbrances, and they are reserved in our fund balance. The energy utility costs, do you want me to give this one a shot, or you want to take it?
If you want to fire away.
Go back to the retroactive ones for a second, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So, that's 798 in addition to the 502?
No, we had reserved 502 in prior years, so it's 798 less the 502.
All right, sorry.
So, I think, I think we all know that each year, I prepare a memo on what we anticipate for gas, diesel, and heating oil, that's usually prepared about this time of year, towards the end of October. A year ago, we were in a very different position than we are now. By the time we got to the point where we were looking at locking in our fuel, was right about the time the war in Ukraine hit, prices skyrocketed, we held off on... was right about the time the war in Ukraine hit. Prices skyrocketed. We held off on purchasing. We did not react to the very volatile market. We were fortunate, we just locked in about three weeks ago. Better pricing than we would have seen right after things had started to get a little unsettled in Europe. But at the same time, the overall impact on all of the budgets combined is going to be about $100,000.
The Farmington Valley Health District, we had done a supplemental appropriation during fiscal year '22. This is just a timing thing. The check wasn't actually cut till fiscal year '23. So we're just assigning that money so that in fiscal year '23, we can take it out. Anticipated tax appeals. I believe Melissa's been working on this one.
Yes, we had three tax appeals associated with the property at the Tobacco Valley Solar. So we are anticipating two of them that we are not settled yet on that we will have costs associated with.
And then the last one is the DEI Council Data Project. This was actually approved, I believe, a couple of years ago. Oh.
Two, boy, two.
Yeah. For $25,000. And we're just rolling over the funding that they haven't used of $22,000 to continue that project.
A question.
Yep.
So if you look at the transfers that we're doing this year, they look a lot different than, you know, the items we had last year. Like these pretty much, you know, cut to the chase, they're for business, there's no extras here, which is good practice, right? Because then most of our decisions will be at the budget time if we're going to make some, some impact. Because there were some things that we brought up during the year and throughout the time we said, maybe we'll use year-end savings, but we're not. So we're going to keep stick to doing those kind of things at the, at the budgets. Everybody can decide and vote in on it and at referendum. So just wanted to point that out.
Good point.
And so then after all of those transfers, it leaves us an unassigned fund balance of about $17,900,000 or about almost 15.6%, which is in accordance with our policy. The next item in your packet for transfers, this is something that we do every year for the audit. And basically, we're just troing up our budget to what actually happened. So a quick example, in the Town Manager's Office, we had a budget of $484,000. We actually only spent $468,000. So we are reducing that budget to $16,000. So now our final budget matches what's actually been spent and there is no balance. And again, we have to do this for the audit.
So for whatever reason, these technically are savings within each department?
Or additional charges depending on-
There's some expenditures there, but minor.
Exactly. Right. So we're just moving the savings in between departments.
Yep.
And then the last item is your capital transfers. So these are for all of the capital projects that have been closed out during the year that have been completed. And any capital projects with surpluses are being returned to their original funding source. So for example, here on the Sewer Use Fund, we had a jet truck that had a surplus of about $15,000. The funding came from the Sewer Use Fund, so we're going to give that surplus back to the Sewer Use Fund. Same thing for the wing plow truck that came from the Town Aid Road Fund and et cetera. The only one that's a little different here is the transfers to the Meadowwood Acquisition Project. So these capital projects down here that are being closed out, they were all bond funded. So we're not allowed to take the excess bond funds and just put it into our reserves. We have to apply it to other projects that are approved for bond funding but have not been bond funded. So what we're going to do is we're going to take this $177,000, we're going to put it against our Meadowwood Acquisition Project, and then we're going to reduce our bonding for Meadowwood by that $177,000. And then down here is our smaller projects from the Capital Reserve. We have our transfer to the Capital Reserve. We have our transfer from the Private Duty Fund into the Capital Reserve that we sweep out every year. And then again, just closing of projects for a net increase to the Capital Reserve. And then down here, you can see our Capital Reserve breakdown. There's a lot going on in the Capital Reserve. We have our bond premiums that we utilize every year. We had some funding for the senior center that we're holding on to. We track what's coming from the Private Duty Fund from the police. We have the assignment that we did for the Latimer Lane overage. And then we are receiving some new funding for a liquor surcharge that has to be utilized for recycling purposes. And then this is our assigned available Capital Reserve Fund breakdown of about 2.1 million. Now, as you recall, during the fiscal year '23 budget process, we actually utilized some of our Capital Reserve. So I don't want you to think that that's our final number. So down here, I put together a brief summary of the transfers and appropriations that we, that you all voted on for the fiscal year '23 budget. And then again, we have all of our assignments. And then our unassigned fund balance is a little over $2 million. This does not include the second tranche of the ARPA funding, which is about 3.7 million. So we have around a little over $500,000 during the next budget cycle for you all to spend as you wish.
In accordance with the intent of ARPA, right?
No, because we took it in revenue loss. So we, we unassigned it.
We are still planning to use it for-
That is your intent, yes.
Yes.
And that is all I have unless you guys have any other questions.
Amy, I love the way you, it's really clear the way you-
Walk us through.
Walk us through it and tell the story. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a different motion that we're going to do tonight.
Yeah, do you have it?
I, I cut and pasted it into-
Here, just design.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to explain, Amy, why there's-
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Of course, I just closed it. So on the assignments, to the General Fund fund balance, there's things that we are assigning for that we think might happen, like the energy cost. He's assuming we're going to be over about $100,000, but are we, we don't know yet. Once we solidify those numbers and we know if we need the number, we can take that money out of assignment. But there's other things in there where we know we're going to need the money. The staff has already planned to go out on medical leave. We know we're going to need that funding. The retroactive wages, we've already paid those out. We know we need that funding. And then the Farmington Valley Health District, again, that was a supplemental in '22 and the funding actually, the check actually got caught in fiscal year '23. So for those items, we're doing a supplemental appropriation fiscal year '23 so that we have the ability to spend those. And then the ones that are assigned, like the energy costs, will come back if we need to spend those.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to read that motion. And to move effective October 12, 2022, to approve the fiscal year '22 year-end general funds and capital transfers request as presented and approved fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriations for the following items. Parks and Rec temp staffing for $10,000, finance temp staffing for 12.5, social services temp staffing for $8,000, retroactive wage increases for $798.655, and the Farmington Valley Health District for $100.56. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move that.
Okay, thank you. Sean, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amy, thank you so much for your help, understanding and going through this.
Anytime.
Okay, then we'll do it again. Okay. Next item is the COVID-19 Relief 501(c)(3) Nonprofit Grant Program. I'll start out on this one, Melissa, if you want to weigh in. So as everyone has heard for quite a while, we've been talking about this nonprofit grant program, which last week we met in the Finance Subcommittee and we went through all the applications. I believe there were 14 applications. To date, we have approved eight of those applications, which are included in your packet. The remaining six, we had some additional questions, not that we're denying or yaying those, but we wanted to get some information to bring back to the board or to the committee, which we're meeting next week anyway. So we're hoping that we'll have the answers next week to discuss those. The ones that we have approved are in here. It's a Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation, Gifts of Love, McLean, the Historical Society, Simsbury Granby Rotary, Farmington Valley BNA, For All Ages, and Simsbury Community Media. I'm not sure if anyone has questions on any of the content here or wants to talk about them, but I'm going to open it up for any discussion. Amber or Heather, if you wanted to weigh in at all, you're welcome to. Members of the committee.
Yeah, I thought in general, you know, all 14 area applications, you know, I think they all came in good faith and, and offer as a whole, kind of a diverse group came. You know, we had some things that are not on here, but as you can see, this is quite diverse. But we also have some other groups that I think make as, as a whole unit, you know, just a diverse way to see the funding go. I guess we were fortunate in that we weren't oversubscribed. So that's a good thing. But, but I think these are all worthy causes and it'll go back into the community.
I, I would say that I think that, you know, the applications that we have moved forward tonight really did hue to what the intent of the ARPA funds were for. A couple of them have to do with, you know, they're still, organizations are still asking for masks because masking is still going to be important as we continue to deal with COVID and move into the winter season. So some organizations are still using this money for, for that. Gifts of Love has a food reclamation program where they are rescuing food from local grocery stores and redistributing it and specifically helps serve 75 families in Simsbury that are food insecure. And so, you know, with the high cost of inflation and as families continue to recover, that is a direct benefit. And some of the other things had to do with improving technology for the Historical Society, for Simsbury Community Media. This will allow them to do more online programming and continue for Simsbury Community Media to provide, you know, the programming that, that they do for us, especially as our meetings continue virtually. So it, it did seem like a lot of these organizations really are working on programs and outreach and things that are still very much tied to recovering from COVID, continuing to deal with the ongoing effects of COVID and helping families cope with it. So I think that they were a good group of applications.
And just, I think one thing to add to that is that while some may, some, for some folks out there may not necessarily access these particular organizations because they may not be affiliated or not ready. But ultimately, I think the overall guiding principle here, and I appreciate everyone who worked on it, is that in some way, shape or form, these organizations are actually community service organizations that are coming back into. It's not, they are not special interests that are serving only one particular organization without open access if you need it for almost all of their services, which is critical.
Good observation. And they, they all had to show, you know, the, kind of the impact of COVID and how, you know, we're all trying to recover or get out of it and move forward. I will say that if, if you wanted, the, the applications that were okayed tonight are in tonight's agenda. If you wanted to look at the ones that we're still reviewing, they're posted now under the Personnel Subcommittee from last week. So if anybody wanted to look at that and if anyone had questions, feel free to ask any of us about that. So I will read the motion. And I have to thank, well, he's not there anymore. Sean Ascom and Jackie Battles were the original starters on the ARPA work group before we could use the money for more things we thought we could use it for. Sean, I'm just thanking you for being on the original ARPA work group and kicking this project forward with Jackie, who isn't here right now. So anyway, I'm going to stop talking and move effective October 12, 2022, to approve funding eight applications received through the 501(c)(3) Nonprofit Grant Program as presented. So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that moves forward. That's, thank you. Okay. So the next item we have is to get a little bit more detailed about cannabis sales in Simsbury. Selectmen got, had asked to have Attorney DeCrescenzo here to walk through. Hey, Bob, if you want to weigh it, you want to-
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. I just thought it would be a good idea for us to have an agenda item to get some clarification on the Board of Selectmen's role in making this decision for the town of Simsbury. You know, I did see your letter and I thank you very much for that to responding to the questions that we had. But I just do have some questions regarding the process. Can I ask a particular couple of questions that I have?
Sure. I mean, it's pretty much an open forum to just kind of go over, unless, Bob, you needed to say anything upfront.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
All contained in the letters are saying.
Sure. So let's start with Heather with questions and we can go down the, the line here.
Okay, thank you. So a question I have, we have, zoning will be having a public hearing on the 17th. They also have two application items there. One is to potentially extend the moratorium for six months and another one is where they would be zoning it. But is, is there a time limit after the public hearing where they could potentially, you know, if they didn't make a decision to extend the moratorium, could they make a final decision on the whether to allow the recreational cannabis in Simsbury that soon after a public hearing? And is there a timeframe that then precludes or takes the Board of Selectmen having a role in this out of the equation?
I think from the zoning commission perspective, any action they would take regarding cannabis would be in the form of a tax amendment to the regulation, which is what they're considering. That does require a public hearing. And the reason it's a tax amendment is because it would create a separate use category for cannabis retail sales, which is what I believe the proposal is before the zoning commission now. They can, if they don't do anything, the zoning commission doesn't do any tax amendment, then cannabis sales, retail sales would be considered in the same category as any retail sales. If they create a separate category called cannabis retail sales, then they can require a special exception permit and they can define the areas where the use category is allowed, which I think they're considering along the Route 44 corridor. So those would be amendments to the zoning regulations and all amendments to zoning regulations require a public hearing, which is the process they're in now. As to the role of the Board of Selectmen, under the Public Act 21-1, subsection, section 148, subsection B, which I start my letter with, the Board of Selectmen can pass an ordinance prohibiting establishment of cannabis establishments. So in other words, the Board of Selectmen can trump any action by the zoning commission by passing an ordinance prohibiting the sale of cannabis on retail level in Simsbury. And that would, once that takes effect, then any further retail sale establishments will not be permitted within the town. You are not, you as a Board of Selectmen are not under a deadline to do that. But if you do it after the cannabis establishment is established, that would, that retail establishment would be allowed to continue.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
So I went to the tech hunt. So the question that I kept thinking is, so if the, if we, if we take no action, and if you look at some of the information that we received from Maria, she did some homework, most of the towns are, right now have been leaving it to their zoning and planning commissions and are not taking it. I think there was one town in the list that was taking it at a legislative action. And there's also, a lot of towns are still in moratorium mode and trying to figure out what to do. If the zoning, this is, if zoning made this tax amendment, say, you know, and I just think they're still working on it, so I'm not sure they're going to vote next week. But if they make their tax amendment, say in November, right, and then we decide in February of next year that we decide we want to create an ordinance to outlaw, right, then, and there's no store yet, do we just throw that all away? You know, is that, is that, like, do we always have that power? I guess you, what you said was until a store opens. But do we always have that capability to trump zoning even after they've made it?
Yes, because zoning regulations are subject to law- Yes, because zoning regulations are subject to the laws of the community, and cannot allow uses that are prohibited by ordinance.
So what happens, like, I guess, you know, you have our board, and say, you know, two, four years from now, you have a new board who decides they don't want the retail sales in town. They can decide that they don't want it to continue?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And then, so that's what...
But then what is here instead?
That's why we brought this up a couple meetings ago, because we needed to be on the same page, otherwise we were wasting zoning's time.
Yep.
Right. I mean, the ideal way to do it is for Board of Selectmen, if you're going to prohibit it, to prohibit it before zoning allows it. Ideal, but it's not required.
Okay.
You run that power into the statute, and you won't lose that.
And we do have the public hearing next Monday, where we can hear from residents, we're trying to get the word out so that people do come and present, you know, how they feel about it. The second question, the...
The zoning commission, by the way, can also has the same power to prohibit it, because the statute says, "Any municipality may, by amendment to such municipality's zoning regulations or by law ordinance, prohibit the establishment of cannabis establishments." So zoning could define it as a prohibited use within zoning regulations. There's a number of prohibited uses in the zoning regulations, and they could add cannabis retail sales to that list if they chose.
Yeah, I saw actually on that list, Maria sent the, I think, the 14 of the banned municipalities, I believe, all but three were banned by zoning.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I think, but the other way to look at it is that the majority of the decisions were made by zoning, whether for or against. Yeah. I'm going to scoot out here, but I have a quick question. Got kid pickup, communication screw up. One way, I think, to also just think about this is that if the zoning board, I think they're going to extend the moratorium, but if we have, if we have better, if we have a conversation with the members of the zoning board, and we sort of figure out how we should have this dialogue with the residents, is really whom we should be having this discussion with, is if the moratorium is put in place, then that does allow us to establish a few more organized touchpoints with community members to get feedback, and not rush a decision by either body, because I don't think either body has really heard much feedback until probably, Monday will probably be their first true open conversation that's taking place. So that's not kicking the can down the road, but it might prevent, Wendy, that intersection of inconvenience that you just said could potentially happen, which then creates, I think, sort of a liability for us as well. Just a thought. If we encourage the, we look at the moratorium as an option to extend the opportunity for greater dialogue, that's my thought there. Did I mean to just leave that to you? Yeah, I didn't mean to throw that at you guys and just run out, but...
So Bob, another question, the trumping question. So what if, I know referendum trumps us, correct?
Correct.
How long is that referendum option out there? Is that out there in perpetuity also?
Well, I don't see anything that'll let it sunset.
Okay.
It's a little bit difficult to undertake, because it can only be done in the November general election, where the statute reads, and it's a 10% threshold for signatures, which is about 1,800 signatures, which, you know, anyone who's tried to collect petition signatures knows that 1,800 is a lot. But yes, there's nothing that sunsets that either.
You know.
In the current statute, in the current law. Keeping in mind that the original Public Act was passed in 2021, and the legislature in 2022 amended it, so, you know, this is sort of a moving target, or has been, I don't know if it'll settle down now, but because it's all new, the legislature is continuing to tweak the law. But right now, I think the petition process is open indefinitely.
And from your experience, like, based on the data that we have, you're seeing pretty much all the towns are leaving it to their land use bodies?
Are going what?
Are leaving it to the land use bodies, to zoning.
Yeah, it appears to be what the surveys are showing, that the legislative bodies of the town are deferred to their zoning commission.
Yeah, it's weird. Okay. Did you get...
No, I really appreciate this. It was definitely, it definitely answered a few questions that I had, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, that was good. Okay. I guess we can move on. Thanks, Bob. Unless you want to...
You're welcome. I'll stick around for the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Get back to the agenda.
I'll mute myself in the meantime.
Okay. All right, so the next item is any comments or changes to the September 28 meeting minutes. And then we have a few public gathering permits, and I don't see any resignations or anything like that. So if somebody wants to make, oh, John, correct the lead, oh, to move that, we go into executive. So we just have Bob in executive session tonight?
I believe Francine. Amy, do you know Francine still?
She probably is.
Okay.
I forgot it for you.
Okay, so we move to executive session, and we have Francine and Bob join us.
Yes, and myself.
And Melissa. Okay, anybody want to move that and second that?
I will move that.
Okay. Second that?
The second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're in executive session now.